Okay, it's kind of like the call looks the plan, vote to out of October sixteenth twenty twenty three at six thirty. We have a scheduled public hearing. The open public meeting for site plan application for four, six, eight Main Street map a two, four, one, possible to car wash. I will bump the second one. Open a public hearing for special permit application for four, six, eight Main Street map two, four, one, possible to car wash. Yes?
Right.
Where do I stand right now?
Hey, right up front behind you.
Alright.
No, it's not your fault.
Come over here.
And just state your name for the record.
Tell me, what is over here?
I'm good.
Uh, good evening board members, uh, for the record, my name is Casey Birch, I'm a project engineer with Solely Engineering. Um, and I'm here tonight with my colleague Jared Height, who is the traffic engineer on the project. Uh, he'll be speaking after me, um.
Okay.
And I'm here on behalf of uh, Noya Energy Retail Inc., uh, the applicant. And we got us a slight site line review and special permit application submitted to this board back in, I believe, August. Um, for the car wash facility, Rose Car Wash Facility located at four sixty eight Main Street. Uh, I'm sure everybody knows where it is, but just for uh, for the record. Um, the project site is approximately three point one two acres and it's bound by Main Street to the east. Uh, the Speedway gas station uh, to the north, Duncan to the south, and undeveloped land um, to the west. Uh, the existing condition at once was the Sunoco gas station, which you guys mentioned earlier. Um, the building canopies uh, and everything associated structural wise has been removed since. I believe there's a lot of the existing paving is still, it's still in, still there uh, according to our survey. Um, access to the site is uh, via the signalized control drive across from Meat Street from here. Um, and we will be utilizing that same signal in our proposed condition. Uh, the site is within the two zones, the commercial C district, which is in the front, and the multi-use one end use only district in the back. Um, the proposed uses a lot within the commercial C district. Uh, the, the project proposes a three thousand nine hundred and seventy square foot car wash facility. Uh, with queuing lanes, vacuum spaces, um, dumpster pads, and uh, emergency exit lanes. Uh, the project will propose twenty vacuum spaces and three regular passenger spaces, uh, standard spaces. For a total of twenty three parking spaces. We are providing one ADA space in the vicinity of these standard spaces um, to the south. Uh, the dumpster location is here, uh, we put it in that location for access as well as uh, uh, access for the, the employees um, with the sidewalk connection to it as well. Um, general operations, uh, customers come in, they'll kind of take this loop into here for, to use the car wash. They'll go through the queuing lanes, um, there are three pay stations at the end of the queuing lanes. They'll pay there and then they'll come around and into the car wash, which is um, automated. So if they just pull in, they don't get out of the car, they don't drive the car, pulls them through. Um, and then they come out and exit the site uh, via their signalized drive. We do, uh, we are providing an emergency um, drive out. It's pretty typical with, with these car wash facilities, just in case somebody pays and then all of a sudden their window doesn't come off. Uh, and they don't want to obviously go through that way, so there, we do have that um, that option. And uh, for the landscaping, uh, we are proposing a pretty extensive landscape plan. Uh, consisting of native trees, grasses, shrubs, and ground cover throughout. Uh, for the trees though, I don't know, it's the biggest thing for landscaping, um. We are proposing two eastern redwoods in the rear uh, across from the uh, the drive entering the car wash and then um, we are proposing a red maple in a Tupelo. I don't know if that's how you pronounce it, I'm, I'm not a landscape architect, in the front. Uh, and then in addition, we are providing um, I believe the, the American Hollies around the, the dumpster enclosure uh, for additional screening. Um, so the project does have an increase in the pervert area um, to that of existing conditions. To mitigate that area, we are providing an underground detention um, consisting of a series of chambers in this location here. Uh, that they have a total storage capacity of about eight, over eight thousand cubic feet of uh, volume that it can store. Uh, runoff gets collected from, from the roof and from the pavement through the catch basins and it goes through here and then it goes through a hydrodynamic separator prior to entering the underground system. That separator, it uses like swirl concentration and screening to pull out any debris or oils um, prior to entering the system, that way the, the water has some quality measures before it exits out into the uh, the slope here. Uh, all, all the uh, measures in design was in accordance with the master's, it's still on a manual hand book.
Uh, snow storage.
Yeah, so the snow storage, let me go back to, let me actually pull up the site. Cause we do, that was a comment and we did provide. Oops, sorry. Just uh, this is the whole plan.
I'll be south for the day.
Yeah, here you go.
Yeah, so we are providing um, some area here, snow storage in, within the middle here um, for the rear and then all this area back here with the sweep stuff. Yeah, the majority. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're hoping the majority were just pushed into these two areas here. And then we'll go to utilities real quick. So for water, we're coming off the existing main here. Um, there is an existing lateral out there now, it's only three quarters inch, three fourths inch. Uh, we are required a two inch for this um, service, so we will have to tie a new tap in to the main. Uh, the primary electric uh, telecom and cable are coming up to this way off the existing utility pole here, which has a uh, pole mounted transformer, uh, so we will be utilizing that. There are two EV charging stations that we are proposing at the vacuum spaces to the south, the southernmost vacuum spaces. So we do have that option on the site. Um, but that will come off this pole and that has its own separate transformer and then it, and that will be charged that way. And then um, for sanitary, the existing lateral is five inches, um, we are able to use that. It, it is a clay lateral, um, but we did have an inspection done and it is in good condition, so we are going to utilize it. So right here. No, yeah, yeah, I, I think that was uh, the idea of our, so. Um, for sanitary, we have three e- three um, exits out of building. We have the uh, pit wash, which goes through um, three reclamation tanks. Um, there's a wax pit area that goes through uh, to a uh, oils and water separator here and then just our regular bathroom. We have one bathroom in the facility and that you goes to uh, just to a manhole and all gets connected and back out here. Uh, the reclamation tanks, the, oh, a lot of these car, we do a lot of these car washes and they're pretty much all pretty standard. Um, and they reuse about sixty six percent of the deep water um, that's utilized and it gets put back into the system for operations, so it's this form of recycling for water.
They just technically get the solids out of it and?
Yeah, that's what the three tanks do and then, and then it pretty much get back in clean as, as they call it for the industry, but yeah. Um, usual for uh, washing cars. And now so, go to the architecturals. So this is a floor plan, uh, you got your wash bay, which is in the, the entire one hundred and twenty four linear feet of the uh, the facility. They got an equipment room and an electrical room in the back, backyard house and then you have the office space in the front. Your ba- bathroom, as I mentioned earlier, is in a little storage area. And this is kind of, I don't know if I printed it as a justice, but um. So for the south, which is uh, plan facing south here, which is actually south as well. Um, towards where the vacuum space are, you'll, you see this uh, glazing, so you can actually see the cars go through and it's a mix between the um, five sentiment panels of different colors. You got the uh, tobacco color and then this is the sandstone color. Um, and then they just have that sandstone paneling um, in the back and then they have actual gla- glaze windows, I believe this is for the office and then there's uh, three broke windows and then a man door here. Um, and then the front, um, those two colors are kind of separated. They have tobaccos representing, you know, entering the actual, the wash pit and then um, the sandstone is backyard house, everything else, office, equipment, um, storage and toilet area.
Are they going to be doing any detailing on site?
No, no, that's um, there's no, there's, yeah, there's no room to come out of the, the wash and have somebody like even dry off your car if they, if you, they just, the way that it's operated and people will, will still be trying to be pushed out after the car wash.
Okay.
Unless you want to go to vacuuming and then you take a ride as you exit instead of like, so. Um, and that, with that said, I, if you don't have any question, I, I mean, I'll come back up, but if you guys want to hear traffic.
Yeah, sure.
Sure. You've got VIP in the office.
Good evening board members, for the record, my name is Jared Height, senior project manager with Solely Engineering.
Welcome, Jared.
Alright. So for the traffic impact study, it is based off of the DOT, Mass DOT guidelines and the traffic impact assessment. Uh, what we did was we studied the five intersections here along Route thirteen. Uh, it's fortunate that DOT did a quarter study and they did a vast improvements along the corridor uh, with pedestrian ADA ramps, signals, uh, they coordinated all five signals, which is uh, great to keep mobility and traffic moving along the corridor. Um, so the five intersections that we've analyzed, we have the site driveway at Meat Street. Um, as you see on the a site driveway here. Um, I, I know there was a couple of comments about, you know, vehicles queuing, queuing at this intersection here within the site. Um, we are not looking, expect, we're expected to generate probably about five to six vehicles that would be generated here at this, at this light coming out of the signal. Uh, due to the size of the car wash, uh, during the weekday, we'll most likely be generating fifty six vehicles. That's twenty six entering, twenty six exiting. Uh, and on the Saturday peak, we'll have approximately hundred ton vehicles, that's sixty entering and uh, sixty exiting as well. Um, out of all five intersections that we've analyzed, uh, the one that did not operate the best was the, uh, the one at Hawes Street. And Hawes, I believe, the left turn movement, which is not, not associated with the car wash, that was a little over capacity. So that's, we noted that in our course at DOT, we probably go out there and uh, optimize the timings to improve that, that approach. Um, the, the main line, uh, as you uh, suspected, they have majority of the green time. Uh, the side streets and the left turn movements along the corridors are the ones that have less green time than the main street.
So you will be using, utilizing that light there?
Yes, we will be utilizing this light. Um, it, it only makes sense because we're gonna keep it both the phase and right now, the fourth phase is Meat Street and the site driveway, they go at the same time.
Okay.
And based off the study, because the traffic is so minimal for the car wash, it will operate uh, quite nicely with the Meat Street traffic as well.
Now, well, is that, is it gonna be a centered light or?
So right now they're mass, they're mass armed. So you said centered light?
Yeah, in other words, if there's a car there, then it's centered, there's, there's a car.
Yes, yes, yeah, correct, yeah, we'll have the.
And then, but if there's no car, then it, then it does, the lights don't switch.
Correct, yeah.
Actually, the light's working now. You get an arrow there. And there is a little bit of queuing, I think, on Main Street.
Right, yeah?
Yeah, it's a lane.
Yep, so there'll be, there's already a left lane here uh, provided for going into the site. Uh, fortunately, you know, no improvements are needed here, paving wise, because the DOT already did everything. You have a turn lane in, the light's already there. What we're doing is just, uh, we're doing a little bit of expanding here for the width of the driveways, which will impact a sign and the ADA ramp, so we should look to the south a little bit. And all that will be reviewed, uh, once approved, we submit those plans to DOT and we'll go through their uh, state highway access permits as well.
Okay.
Yep. Any questions for traffic?
When, when turning out the car wash and people are turning left and they're talking, that's a really annoying thing. I mean, it's like, I mean, it's a control light. No, it just means, you know, the concern about people taking left turning here.
It's gonna be tough anyway, cause there's two lanes coming.
It's, it's a, it's a tough, stretch of road. Yeah.
Well, right now, I believe the operation will be for the left turns to go.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, I don't think they'll, they'll be restricted, they won't walk across.
They'll be able to go straight too.
But there's a turning lane, right?
Yeah, so they'll be queued, yeah, enough capacity here.
Right.
Correct.
You can pull up thirty cars and queue on the, on your property on site. That would say in the report.
Yeah.
It's thirty, I mean, that's a lot of cars queued up.
Well, that, that's enough to be queued up here, not, there's not gonna be like thirty cars.
No, no, but here, if they had thirty cars without being out of the street.
But there, but it, the car wash itself is gonna restrict the number of cars that are coming out of there. You know, there's only so many cars. Okay?
Yeah.
One speed.
Correct.
And then you're coming out while at a time, so on Saturday, it becomes.
Unless they're all, unless they're all using vacuuming at the same time.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing that we've, you know, there'll be no queuing if there's any cars backed up on Main Street, so we'll have to.
Yeah.
Um, be a sign, it's no queuing or something.
Yeah, well, as I mentioned, you know, it's, it's a low generator, um, you know, so vehicle, the amount of vehicles that are waiting to get within the site, it's gonna be.
Yeah, your, your generation is a lot less than the gas station next door.
Drop in the bucket compared to what's going.
Well, probably a lot less than the gas station that was there.
Yeah, probably.
It's more for telling, probably had more trips into Sunoco than this place. No, it's a good plan.
Okay.
Looks good.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's good. Okay? Yep. Do I have any questions from the audience, anybody got any questions?
Should we talk Patrick real quick? Patrick, did you have anything?
No, I'm all set so far, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll ask again, do I have any questions from the audience? Fred, don't you have anything to say?
No, I'm fine. Come on, Fred, act, act with him.
I'll ask one more time. Do you have any questions from the audience? Okay, here and then, uh, from the board one more time. Motion would be an honest to oppose a public meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion made and seconded to put. Oh, sorry about that. I got the, the. Okay. To find the comments.
They're minimal, but.
Yeah, they're, they're minimal.
Would you like to walk through the ground and for practice?
Alright, um. For the record, again, my name is Casey Birch, uh, project engineer, first sole engineer. Um, the, we did respond to uh, planning comments in uh, I guess DAP comments uh, on September twenty ninth, two thousand twenty three. Um, the first comment, uh, do, do you want me to read them out and then? Uh, per section twenty two dash fifty eight point two, uh, the police and fire department will evaluate the proposal to ensure that all buildings are readily accessible for police and fire protection. We wrote acknowledged, I don't know if there's any additional comments from them this time.
I'm looking at the police one and it says, if the alarm system installed, you'll give them the information. Uh, peer review should be conducted for traffic safety as traffic patterns have recently changed. Uh, security cameras are measured, you can't, this is not open or staffed.
Yeah, we, that's our comment, the security cameras, there are gonna be security cameras here, um, that we, that'll be part of the building current set that they submit, um, when they do that and I'm, I'm sure that it's heavily reviewed in the two as well, but they, to answer the question for a security cameras, yes, we will be providing those, um.
And then the fire just talks about access, unobstructed vertical clearance and.
The, the vertical clearance is, yeah. Yeah, there's no, there's no canopies, um, cool, this, this vertical clearance is high enough for that, so yeah.
Like, right, they're turning back.
Yeah.
Does the fire truck fit through the queue?
Um, this, this right here is at eleven, I believe eleven feet, um, and then this is sixteen, uh, but if there are people there, um, during an emergency, I mean.
I used to talk in thirteen six for the unobstructed view of the fire truck.
Yeah, that's the vertical clearance, so that bar, the height bar right there, yeah.
With the lane and the.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I know that the fire department requires, is it sixteen feet for?
Twenty feet of width.
Twenty feet of width, yeah.
Twenty feet.
So I think this right here does not, is not twenty feet, um, but, I mean. Ri- right, that's why I asked if the fire department had any other comments.
Yeah, but that's their comment, right?
Oh, that it, yeah, it's just a vertical plane?
It says. No, both of them, it says, uh, fire department access threshold, unobstructed width of not less than twenty feet and an unobstructed vertical clearance of not less than thirteen six.
Right, I mean.
Going around the.
I, I, we could, we could make, we could make this twenty feet wide to the exit, so they can access it this way and they can access it this way.
I mean, don't they usually ask for a turnaround?
Yeah, they wanna drive through and turn around.
So.
They don't wanna be backing out.
Is it a possibility, you can creep anywhere around the outside?
Yeah, I think the, the problem with that is, um, is operations, that we're afraid that people bypass that and not use the pay lane, which is kind of why nobody really has a bypass lane for car washes, but, um.
So those, those are the, those are their comments and then both the fire and police ask about a travel study.
Okay. Traffic study review?
Peer review.
Peer review, gotcha, okay. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're obviously we would accept that.
So we, we'll make those conditions.
Okay.
Um, we normally make all the department's policies conditions, just.
Right, okay. Do you want me to continue, continue with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, ahead.
Um, parking per section twenty two dash fifty eight point three. All parking spaces and maneuvering areas shall meet standards specified within this ordinance. The parking proposal has been evaluated as follows. Number of parking spaces per section twenty two dash forty six, required parking established as a car wash use falls under all others uses and requires one space per full time employee during a maximum daily shift. And then it says, please designate the number of full time employees working during the maximum daily shift. So the parking factors can be determined. And then if one parking handicap space is proposed, this is adequate. And then B, the proposed width of all maneuvering aisles and parking area are compliant, sorry, hold on. The requirements detailed in section twenty two dash fifty two point two point one. So our response was, uh, the site has been designed with twenty vacuum spaces, two standard parking spaces and one ADA parking space for a total of twenty three parking spaces. So they just coordinate in the applicant, in the applicant program, the Golden Ozil Car Wash, which I don't know if I mentioned, for the record, that's what the company's name is. Um, uh, typically operates with two employees, but during their busy period, they will have a maximum of three employees, um, per peak. Um, so, and they, they've used in the past, if their employees have used uh, vacuum spaces. Um, there's two for the typical employee count, but if there is a maximum of three for those higher peak, um, I believe like in, in winter and stuff, uh, there will be employees that probably utilize the vacuum space, so there, we will not utilize obviously the ADA parking spaces for employees. Um, and number three was uh, the snow storage, section twenty two dash fifty two point five point two. And the off parking loads, uh, surface equal to at least five percent of the gross parking and loading area must be designated for snow storage. Add a table for the plan, detail how much surface is impervious and the percentage of area designated for snow storage. And I, we definitely provided that. On the site plan. Two point one one. Should I wish that out on a separate board now?
You do, you're dropping a bunch of boards.
So we provided that table down here, um, it says, uh, total impervious area is thirty thousand seven hundred and eighty, requires snow for storage five percent. Um, required is one thousand five hundred and thirty nine square feet. We're proposing two thousand two hundred and fifteen square feet of the area shown. Um. Pedestrian walkways per section twenty two dash forty eight point four point two. All proposed pedestrian access ways shall be not less than five feet in width, indicated, indicate the width of all concrete walkways. Um, we modified the two point one one to do so, uh, this, all this walkway here is all five feet and we put uh, dimensions, um, showing that. And this one's bigger than five feet, which we dimension on this marsh, I believe. Which is hard to do. Oh, seventy, nice. And then uh, it goes into nine here. Lighting, demonstrate the section twenty two dash fifty eight point six, as Matt required that this site maintain a level of one foot candle. Ground also demonstrate the section twenty two dash sixty two point two and twenty two dash C three point one point three, pertaining to outdoor lighting since that's right. Um, so the lighting plan is two point five, uh, seven one. Um, response, uh, the proposed lighting plan has been revised to satisfy the section requiring a level of one point oh foot candle in the driveway. Um, parking in pedestrian areas of section, in section twenty two dash sixty point two and twenty two dot six three dot one dot three. Um, all proposed fixtures are, will be dark compliant, um, both the hole and the um, wall packs, um, yeah. And then uh, landscaping per section twenty two dash sixty two point three. A landscaping plan shall be prepared by a registered landscape architect. A licensed engineer does not suffice, um, per section twenty two dash sixty two dot three dot two. Side yard setbacks must be landscaped except for used for parking driveway. So our landscaping department is in Connecticut. We do have a licensed uh, landscape architect that's licensed in the state of Connecticut that did the design plans. Um, we, I don't know if we changed it to. No, so, so our, our, the guy runs the company, stamps and signs all the, all the plans, but uh, we did put on the cover sheet the, the landscape architect that actually did the design of the landscape plan.
Yeah, they'll need a waiver.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't, so that, that's definitely. So did we request that where you're here?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. So I'm.
That's not something.
Okay. Uh, signage per section twenty two dash sixty dot one dot fourteen. Include location, size, height, orientation and design of all signs. Some signage is displayed on the building elevation sheet, please designate whether more signage is requested. Um, so I believe the original, they, the architects modified it, so I think there's only a sign that satisfies, it's a three by eight sign on the, on the um, uh, southern elevation. They used to have one in the, I believe in the front, they took it cut off. Um, and then we're utilizing, yeah, actually both, there's two existing high long signs out there. Uh, so we will be, we, um, pan. Uh so we will be re um paneling this tile on sign, the sunoco sign. Um and then and then we pan on the existing sunoco full service sign. Stormwater report per section twenty two dash sixty two point one, a stormwater runoff report is required. Uh this is submitted and is being reviewed by the PPW and conservation engineer for compliance with six standards. Um we wrote acknowledge uh does that I didn't see if that was if they had any of the comments regarding stormwater report.
No, they just needed a water and sewer clearance plan.
Okay. Okay.
And you acknowledged that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll we'll provide that.
That area did recently flood pretty badly, so an hour ago one thousand
Yeah, 'cause I know if you saw Levens or on New York
That that's spot specifically. Have to pass a warrant, that's
Yeah.
It's gonna be important.
Yeah, yeah, I know the uh the river is up up here to the to the right. Uh we did we did probably say that we did go through conservation commission and and received those approval.
You hired me. Yeah, the water's going.
Um Surrounding uses per section twenty two dash sixty point one point one, all property boundaries and the use and ownership of adjacent land and the location of the use of any buildings thereon within three hundred feet of the boundary to survey property shall be displayed. Uh we revise our overall site area map which is two point one oh um to show three hundred feet radius. Yeah, that's this this buffer right here.
Okay.
Um and we showed all the the uh property information pretty much with a lot of that. Uh easements per section twenty two dash sixty point one point seven demonstrate the location within and purpose of all existing and proposed easements and right of rights on the property are displayed. Um acknowledged, uh we revised that two point one one. Um bicycle racks, uh this is an interesting
I recognize this.
We can waive that.
Yeah, they request their waiver.
I wanted to see the guy ride his bicycle to the rack.
Yeah.
I wanna see that.
That's really from police. Yeah.
Yeah, so we're we're requesting a waiver for that, I mean if it's an LBR, we'll find something and put it on, but um uh number twelve traffic study, uh the board may require peer review of the traffic study because proposed car wash use as shall take into consideration the safety of the proposed development per section twenty two dash fifty eight point one point nine um II two shall also confirm that the proposed nature of the operation will be in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood per section twenty two dash six hundred three point two point one. Projects in the seeders here must demonstrate that the use will maximize traffic safety impacts on highways. requirements of traffic impact statement detailed in section twenty two dash sixty three. Yeah, we're like we said, hold on one more comment, I will be back after that. And uh this is the planning and development directive. View uh special view comments, uh we read one in that section. Uh the applicant is recommended to supply a letter detailing how the special permit use application meets the criteria of article I section twenty two dash thirteen with his own orders until such letter submitted, the application is considered incomplete, we did provide that. And then we have a board of health comment must have trash management plan, empty trash or stuff goes regularly each day, all loose trash will be empty daily. We did provide, we updated our long term operation and maintenance manual, which was originally in our uh project narrative, I believe. Or maybe it was a separate document in this in this case, um but we did add a trash management plan to that as well, um and you and I believe you do have the revised OM for that. Uh number two, uh landscape barriers shall be in place between jungle zones plus the car wash to rent litter from spreading. Um We wrote uh landscape plan sheet two point six one has been developed in accordance with the limits of zoning ones, a state above a trash management plan will be established to maintain clean property free of trash litter and um free, so we can display separation already. Um I mean I actually know that from from where we where our trash is and from I mean, there's just um this some separation, maybe get some landscaping off the side. I mean, we can provide more of a barrier if you guys prefer.
And there's and there's isn't there quite an elevation change there?
Yeah, the elevation change.
Yeah, this is about this is about four feet, five feet change.
Lock wall or something.
Actually, it might be more, it's just
I think it's actually more than that.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's right, sure.
Yeah.
That's yeah, that's true, we are we are in a depression here, so yeah. Actually, it might be higher, well, I think we're higher than yeah, I think we're lower, we're definitely lower than them. Um but yeah, we're higher than them. But again, if you if you guys want any additional barriers, let us know. Um
I'll get to it.
Assessors office.
Three thirty seven, three three thirty one. Okay. Three thirty seven. Yeah, it's not that much. Yeah, in the back there is quite a bit more. Okay.
This is also this area here, we're kinda swaling it um for some portions of not the pavement, but all the uh landscaping areas kinda getting swaled and going down here, and this is a New England um conservation wet wetland seed mix, so that will grow. Um in with that, so that that can also create some sort of a barrier between the properties as well. Um and that doesn't that barely gets mowed, it's kinda like a no mo mix, so. Um assessors office comments, uh number one, four sixty A Main Street is located in commercial zone, five thousand square feet. Uh twenty feet frontage based on current zoning requirements, uh the proposed use seems fine, solely acknowledged. Um number two, only concern is that it's located directly across the street from a major intersections with streetlights. Not sure how people exiting the car wash should go left or uh we are providing a left turn only um at the same line intersection as well, so I don't know if she I know I saw that.
Yeah, feel it, yeah, okay.
Um fire department comments, number one, uh five two seven CMR one point oh.
Yeah, we talked about.
Yeah. Five by max access roads shall have an unobstructed width not less than twenty feet. Uh the and we wrote acknowledge the car wash securing access should not intend to be a five apartment access road and has been designated with a sixteen foot wide width um consistent with potential car wash layouts um.
That's on this road, yeah.
That's that's it.
Okay, can you put that with any kind of a barrier that can be taken down by the fire department? The lock or something like that, so if they do come in, they could go around it by just dropping the barrier?
Yeah. I mean, we yeah, we can also we can also look at it's tough at the pay station, but we can look at this side maybe um the the grades here are also pretty pretty big over three to one up
Yeah.
pass from here, so we'd have i- i- if we'd have to like shift it down um then we could put like a mountable curve, that way it's it's quite noticeable when a car does it and is trying to bypass maybe, uh we could look into that for sure um.
Yeah.
So a fire truck couldn't fit through here?
Well, it's not the twenty uh it's not the twenty foot wide that they require.
What is it now?
Um I believe I believe this is this is eleven and then this is sixteen.
Eighty seven sixteen. Eighty seven sixteen. That'd be ten one, I suppose, that's that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So here we could look at making it twenty with a mountable curve and um maybe some serious striping. We'd have to figure out push it down maybe.
Yeah. If you could do something like that, only some and I like some, I know, you know, you don't wanna make it so people can go around, so I appreciate that, so.
Yeah, we could do that, I think there's enough room to do that.
Okay. So you worked out something with the fire department. You know, maybe the
So the would would a condition be satisfied by the department?
Prost. Yeah, it will be.
Okay.
We're gonna have to continue this to wait for the
To continue, correct, yes.
The trial.
To review and you can tell if
Yeah.
You're gonna have to work with the fire department.
But maybe again, can probably call and post a stand up.
Forward.
The forward.
Right.
But it'll be movable forward though, somebody won't know it's removable.
Right.
But the fire department can pull in and out and pull the forward out and then drive around.
Right.
Okay?
Okay, yeah.
You know, so if you have something like that, and if the fire department knows it, then they can then they they get nothing to access it.
Or maybe they'll, they may have other ideas on this.
Maybe they have other ideas, but I mean that's that would be my my suggestion, something like that. I don't think, you know, they say call for twenty, but you know, I think the trunk this is eight, eight and a half, I think is a is closer to ten.
I'll we can provide that contact information, we can circle it.
That'll be perfect, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Okay, keep going.
Okay, yeah, um and the next one is the clearance comment of thirteen six um.
Okay.
And yeah, like I said, provided that elevated those um. Conservation Commission comments, uh conservation requests needed species only on landscape areas, otherwise projects will be issued border conditions by the conservation commission, any further modifications should be submitted to conservation for approval. Um acknowledged, stated above, project will issue under conditions at the R twenty second landscape conservation. Um
So I think there were two waivers that are requested and two conditions that we have.
Well, we had
One bike rack, one bike rack.
And the landscape already there.
The bike rack and the obviously landscape architect, we wanna do waivers for
Yeah.
the conditions would be the peer review of the traffic study resolving the issue with the fire department and the water and sewer clearance.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, but that will cover that, we'll continue it, we'll co- cover that.
I just wanna make sure that the applicant's aware of these.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
My my only question is um conservation commission, it's pretty generic, they always ask for a native species.
Yes.
And you mentioned in the landscape plan, you mentioned some
Yeah. Yeah, we have
I've never heard of Tupelo.
Yeah, that that's a tree, that's a tree, yeah, the island uh these all these plants in this like I said, they're all native to the to the uh area, yeah.
Yeah, they could be. Okay.
Okay.
So then we're not gonna close the hearing.
No, we won't close it, 'cause we have another issues. Continue, how long you think it takes for a peer review?
I don't know, I think it's do I have to get three quotes and take the last one and
What's your best guess of it?
Two minutes. Um I have to give them at least a week or ten days to give me a quote.
So we should schedule a month.
And then then the board, then we have to take the engineer to do it and then they give them time to do it. So it's not gonna be next meeting.
So so let's schedule a month.
November meeting?
Um and that's just just near where she'll pick the little bitter and then you'll be responsible for getting us an extra check for that now.
November.
Yeah.
Oh, make sure you We have a meeting scheduled on eleven twenty.
Okay, I move to anything scheduled for that here?
Nothing.
Okay, so I move to continue the hearing for
Site plan.
uh site plan till six thirty on November twentieth and the special permit for six thirty one on November twenty.
Thank you very much.
No, you can take one presentation, they have to take them individually.
Okay, that's first one.
That's all right, yes.
Six thirty for the site.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good question.
Okay, I have a motion made, do I have a second to continue the open public meeting to say eleven twenty?
Eleven twenty, yeah, that's six thirty.
Twenty, at six thirty. Okay, a motion made and seconded, uh any discussion?
We gotta do a roll call for that.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's yeah, I forgot. Okay, a roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
South Chacone excuse, Carver Torioso excuse, Tom Kerrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parry.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Right now, six thirty one on eleven twenty for the uh special permit.
I have a second.
Okay, second, uh motion made and seconded for six thirty one. Okay, uh eleven twenty for the public hearing, special permit. Okay, begin roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
South Chacone excuse, Carver Torioso excuse, Tom Kerrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parry.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes. Okay, okay, gentlemen. Thank you, very good, move on. Uh call to honor.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Here.
South Chacone excuse, Carver Torioso excuse, Tom Kerrigan.
Here.
Jason Parry.
Here.
Dean Valier.
Here.
John Souza.
Yeah. Okay, minutes of previous meetings. You don't have any.
Says no.
Plans submitted, N R for eight two one, West Street, map two six two, Plaza five.
The wood chair. Are you looking?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, do you wanna say your name and address for the record? We can say it up.
Good evening, my name is Rainey Richards, for the record, and I live in West Street. And I'm the owner of the uh two properties, the two lot one and lot two.
Okay. Okay. And yeah. So what are you moving here, Rainey?
I'm looking to increase lot one by three feet and then decrease lot two by three feet. And the uh the basic reason for that is the I propose to put a new home on lot one. And uh it's always been a problem with lot two, there's a driveway that was shared between the two lots. So I eliminated the driveway and by doing the driveway used to enter the side of the residence
Okay.
and now the driveway faces the uh the driveway garage door faces the street now. So now I freed up space on lot one, which gives us more flexibility to place a house desirably on uh on lot one.
Okay.
Uh it seems miniscule by three feet, but it means an awful lot to lot uh to lot one as far as the three foot gain as far as the
Sure.
gives us a little elbow room where lot two has a hundred and fifty some odd feet of frontage already, you know, which would be a lot taller.
Yeah, we should look at. And what's the zoning here? This is residential, idiot.
It's residential, I.
Eighty.
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 Probably bring up plenty there. Well, he's gonna carry that back to the hundred. Okay, so that's that's all right. Okay, um.
I move to Endos.
It's like a
I have a motion made and seconded uh to Endos. Any further discussion? Here now, call for the vote, I don't think it would say aye.
Uh roll call.
Roll call. Say aye. Oh, roll call, I get that. I forget, we get a guy on the phone.
Okay.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
South Chacone excuse, Carver Torioso excuse, Tom Kerrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parry.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
And may I make a comment on on a ship, Elizabeth and and Stephanie, they did an excellent job helping and put this through, I like the compliment on this one.
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate that, we got a good staff, we know that. But we always can accept it, you know, it's great to have.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, three point two site plan application for twenty one Jungle Road, map three oh one, Plaza one, industrial warehouse manufacturing. Um just to be scheduled.
We have November sixth at six forty, we have something at six thirty and something at six thirty one. Actually, that was withdrawn, so it's open.
Okay, so November sixth at six thirty would be the motion.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. It's withdrawn, right? Is this the apple seed? Apple seed. No, we have to leave those there because we said it's a better, so you have to do it after that. Since we advertised.
So six thirty six, what's either motion?
So six thirty six.
Six thirty six?
On eleven six.
On eleven six.
Okay.
Seconded.
I have a motion made and seconded for November sixth at six thirty six. Um. Yeah, I don't know. It's just different schedule. Uh roll call please.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
South Chacone excuse, Caravaterioso excuse, Tom Carrigan.
Tom, here, yes.
Here.
Here.
Here, yes.
Yes.
Jason Parry.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Suzo.
Yeah.
That'll be.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Distracting. We're scheduling. I'll I'll take the call.
No old business. Uh our motion carries. Uh old business done, new business. Site plan application for four, six, eight Main Street map. Two forty one parcel two car wash. This has been continued. Okay, right?
I should call um Patrick on another phone because the battery died.
Oh, okay.
Well, you can vote to.
You can say the next one's table to vote or wait or continue.
Yeah. Uh special permit application for four, six, eight Main Street map two forty one parcel two car wash. That's also been continued.
Now we have to make a motion to go into executive session?
Exactly, do that.
Patrick, I'm calling you on another phone because this battery is about to kick out.
All right, make sure you call the second number and say you know the person.
Okay.
Well, you have. Yeah, we gotta go into it, okay?
You can read the executive session.
Okay, I have to make a motion uh to go into executive session. Uh we will be coming back in uh after.
All right, thank you. John for the record, can you read it out loud?
Okay, oh yeah, I gotta read that. Uh the executive session is concerning Soyway, a day street subdivision. Executive session on the general law. Chapter thirty eight, section twenty one A three to discuss strategy with respect to this threatened litigation regarding New England Land Company. LLC and the work performed at Soyway. As an open meeting may have have a detrimental effect on the litigation portion to of the city. Yet this chair so declared, I so declare. The planning board will convene the open session at the conclusion of the executive session. So we'll have to uh we want to do executive session.
Are you guys stay or?
So we have to shut that off.
So we're we're gonna discuss this and move to come.
You have to vote.
We'll open the door when we're done.
Okay.
Are you guys gonna be?
It's all the agenda.
You wanna get a together after?
Yeah.
All right, call me. Be calm.
Okay.
Yeah, text me. How's everybody do?
They're doing good. You have to vote. Uh the and so yeah.
Roll call, roll call.
And the roll call vote to go into executive session.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
South Chacone excuse. Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parry.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Suzo.
Yes.
Caravaterioso excuse.
Yes. That's it. Uh on the communications that concerning Soyway um uh that has been uh continued. Uh. Until we have further further information and some signatures. Okay, I don't think it needs anymore.
No.
Discussion at this time.
Director's report.
Director's report.
Hi, everybody. I went to the Snepa conference, Southern New England chapter of the New American Planning Association in New Haven. It was October sixth and fifth and sixth and I went to nine different sessions. I went to two in housing. Um there were a lot of there was a lot of talk at the housing. Uh seminars about why we have a problem with housing and only a few solutions offered. Um some of them are gonna help Lemonster because they wanted to take office buildings um where people have gone to work at home. After covid and vacated their offices and converting those into housing, but we don't have a lot of vacant office space here in Lemonster. Um there was one from the A A R P that um told me about some grants and some um. They had some suggestions, but they didn't tell them us what they were. They just told us to look them up, so that's my homework to look that up.
I don't know that.
Um I ran into um some folks that do flood resiliency work, which might be good for Lemonster. Because we experienced some horrible flooding.
Yeah, we did.
Um and in addition to providing flood resiliency work, they also write grants to help you get the work done. So I'm gonna look into that um more as my homework. Um I went to a workshop on soils. There's a Massachusetts Soil Guide. I got that for the conservation agent. Uh there was another section on equity hiring and I got some best practices from the H R director. Um so it was it was good. I made some good contacts. Talked to people from all over. I I really.
Uh two days.
Two days. Yeah, I went I mean at lunch and at the reception and at breakfast I talked to a lot of people.
That's good.
It was good.
Okay.
And I recommend that you think about joining me next year in Springfield, November seventh and eighth, I think it is, early November. Um because it'll probably be another very good conference.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
Very good.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to adjourn.
Roll call.
And if I have any discretion, here none, call for the roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
South Chacone excuse, Caravaterioso excuse, Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parry.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Suzo.
Yes.
Thank you, Patrick.